The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, November 13th, 2019.
Good morning, and welcome to the Wednesday, November 13th, regular scheduled meeting of the White Pine County Commission. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge? And Brian Waters should do this today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The first item we do is normal, is we go ahead and take one moment of silence, meditation, whatever you'd like to do. Okay. The first item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment this morning from anyone on any of these issues? Feel free to come forward and state your name. Public comment. George?
Mr. Chairman, at an earlier meeting, I repeated that the building inspector was observed in Eureka on Friday, September 13th, 2019. He attended an event at the Eureka Opera House along with his wife. It appears that the building inspector is using city-county vehicle normally used for inspection. Is his wife or others authorized and insured to be in the government vehicle? Does the building inspector get fringe benefits? Is the usage computer then reported as taxable or reported on the W-2? Does the city-county have a contract with the city of Eureka or Eureka County to do inspections? If so, when was it put in on the agenda? Who approved it? How much revenue does the county and city get? He's refusing to give me a permit to re-roof my property. He's being vindictive. He needs to be terminated. He has yet to enforce the law regarding the proper installation of re-roof on my building at 570 Altman. Only to say George hired a poor contractor. I didn't give the license. You folks did. The city did. The state did. When a government creates a danger that inflicts trauma, the government is responsible for providing a solution, Mr. Chairman. How many discrepancies do I have to present before you do something with that building inspector? We're just going on and on. It needs to stop. I need to re-roof my building. Mr. Chairman, to date, there's not been an update from the economic development person representing White Pine County. Where are we at? What is being done? Is that person being paid? If so, what's the salary? Months ago, I talked to one person that I, who I thought was economic development person, and I expressed a need for a coal supplier. I burn coal as well as others in the county. Here it is, fall and winter coming. No response. I've done what I can. I don't know what else to do. But there's others in the same position. You have people you're paying for to do a job, they better do, start doing their job. You're falling down. Mr. Chairman, the commission has yet to install a decent sound system so that those that have a hearing disability can hear. Numerous people have attended your public meetings in the past and expressed those concerns over a period of time. To date, you have not done anything. When you ran on addressing the issue, you had a huge hearing over at the Elks Hall. Three or four people told you they couldn't hear. One microphone. Come on, you can do better than that. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Biden has yet to respond to any attempt for collection and track rental fees from S&amp;S Railroad while he was chairman.
We're not going to address that, George. That's a city issue. We're not going to address that.
Mr. Chairman, Colonel Kenzie has yet to correct the improper non-AD conforming sidewalk in Lund.
Discuss that. Time after time, that's enough for that.
It's been corrected, Mr. Chairman. You have an obligation.
We've timed that. That's enough.
It's enough when it's being corrected.
Go on.
Mr. Chairman, I've yet to see an item on your agenda regarding your Vikings Fund. I want to remind you that I've yet to receive compensation for damages I suffered over $200 on my building, and most recently another $150. You have a new justice center. Does that include everyone? When am I going to give my money, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I have yet to receive an answer from the county commission as to whether you have to sign a nondiscrimination clause when receiving federal loans or grants. This request is months old. Please respond in writing.
Thank you for your comments. Are you, are you done? Is that it?
For now, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
I want some answers, though.
Thank you, George.
Okay. Did you notice the damage to that ashtray out outside?
Yeah, we did.
You need to start cleaning up this area here.
Well, that was unfortunate. But that's, that's another story. Right now, we're going, any other public comment? Please come forward, state your name.
Morning, Commissioners. Just a real quick, I just had a couple of copies, but this is for Chairman Howard and Commissioner Carson. From the SEDS meeting, I just wanted to let you know, that is the population, the official demographers report. It says, I think, 10,817 or something, right around there, where the SEDS had said 9,542. I just wanted you to know, so you have to correct.
Was this on the, was this on the state?
State demographers.
Okay. So one just hadn't caught up with the other.
Somewhere in there. But that's a pretty big difference, you know, it means a 10 percent difference.
That's with the prison as well, right? Prison block.
Correct.
It does.
Their residents of the county.
Yeah, this is public comments. We can't discuss the items. We got to pay the workers.
So I just wanted.
Thank you very much. Put on another agenda if we need to, to address this, and we will. Appreciate it. That was a good job. Okay. Any other public comment? I'll ask once more. Any other public comment before we go into the regular scheduled meeting? Hearing none, we'll move forward. We're going to make one little deviation before we do that. We're going to go to page eight, and it's item, under four, notice untimed items. It's item A. It's discussion for possible action, the approval to send a letter to the SNWA regarding a public access request for a new citizens advisory committee. Kyle, Laura.
Chairman, Members of the Commission, thank you very much. As we know what's going on over there, a lot of important things are happening as it relates to water in White Pine County. And we, we know that the SNWA is forming a new citizens advisory committee, and I'm just only here to say that we want to make sure that White Pine County has access to all the proceedings that are going on down there, because the citizens advisory committee will be dealing with the SNWA and these committee members talking about their water future for decades to come. As we know, White Pine County has been a part of their, their plans for many, many years, and we just want to make sure that, that the folks up here have access to any public meetings going on. This, that would meet with past precedent that the water authority has set, where they made sure that folks up here could have access. So, so this is nothing new. It's not an extraordinary request. All it is, is I think just making an ask to ensure that the public can participate. And I know that the White Pine County Water Advisory Committee meets those requests for folks all throughout the state, and so we just want to make sure that that happens. And I think this, doing something such as this will send a, we'll just, you know, send that message that folks up here are very curious, and as long as White Pine County is, is a part of their future plans, I feel like all the folks up here should be able to participate. So if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I see the signatures in the CC down here. Has Lincoln County and Nye County also received to send, are they sending a letter, or are we letting them know that that's?
That is, I, I've been in touch with, with Nye, not, not Lincoln about this, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, is what I've done so far, but I just, I wanted to.
And then did you speak with, with Lincoln? Was it Lorraine?
None, in Nye.
I mean, Nye, I'm sorry.
Would have been Oswald.
Oh, Oz? Her husband?
Yeah, but anyways, that.
Do you, I'd like to know what the response was so far as?
Yeah. That, I can, I can get back to you. My, you know, obviously, I think White, White Pine was top of my priority list in terms of just outreach and making awareness. That's all I want to do, is just make folks aware of, that this is happening, and again, because White Pine County is a part of their long-term plans, I just thought it was prudent to just kind of raise awareness about what's happening.
Who's going to draft it out of you?
This is it.
Yeah?
Yeah, I'll bet it.
And I want, I want to make sure, this is, this is the letter just asking for, asking to make sure that there is access, whether it be phones, or live streaming type of situation.
At times, the, oh gosh, cooperative extension used to be able to do that, because I attended different things back then. I don't know if they still have that ability. I'm not sure. Yeah. Check before you.
We can do that. I have gone through training.
Please go forward.
We can bring those meetings here. I have gone through the training at the university to do the video conferencing, so yes, that's still a possibility.
Awesome.
As long as we have a schedule, we can, yeah.
And as the Water Advisory Committee does, there's just a dial-in number, so they can just call and listen in on cell phones.
And it'd be nice to be able to see if we have that ability. I know it always helps me, because sometimes with the phone, it's, yeah. Has, has the DA's office had a chance to look through this?
No, I'm looking at it now.
I don't know if you guys have been visiting.
Do you guys want to pass it?
Yeah.
Subject to any conditions that the DA's office may have on it, for input.
Yeah, because I think that we should be able to continue to go ahead and.
You know, I think this is just meeting with the standards under the, the open meetings laws and such, so this is very diplomatic.
Yeah, move to approve, with the caveat of the DA's.
It's, it's fine.
It's good. All right, move to approve.
Motion by, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All of the favor, aye, opposed, none.
Thank you all so much. Commissioner Carson, I can make a touch up. Thank you.
I just saw the names down on the paper.
Excellent. Thank you.
Now we'll go back again to our regular order of the meeting, and it's the, it's on page two, item one, it's the, item nine oh five, Fire Commission. We'll reassess the county commission meeting and open the Fire Commission meeting, and at the start of the Fire Commission meeting, we have public comment. Is there any public comment on the Fire Commission meeting this morning? Anyone? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move forward, and we'll move on to page two. Item one, discussion update on fire district progress. Brett North, Fire Chief, and in place of Ross Rivera, we have Pat Stork. So please come forward.
We had a pretty busy month in October. Got a lot done. We have the Blue Shot pod out to Station One on the 11th, and apparently they run out of shots that they were allotted from the state very early, so hopefully we can get more next year. We've held training with the Reach helicopter with Lund, McGill, and Ruth. We landed right in their towns. Was it so they could get familiar with how it all operates, which we need to start utilizing, or we're going to lose that. We've got extrication training scheduled Saturday, the 16th, at Station One. That's between the city and the county. We're both putting it on. Target Solutions Training Website is now, members have got the login information. I'm setting it up so the volunteer chiefs can assign training to their members. It's a real good website. All the EMTs can do their CEU training through the air on it, so they, they're up to date on all that. Internet, phone and fax, we're still work in progress on that, and, which is why I don't have any run numbers, because we have no way of picking them out without doing reports.
What happened down at McGill? I thought there was somebody scheduled to go.
They're still waiting on the fax machines, I believe.
We have internet is installed and operational, but they have to have hard lines for those type of reports. And so we are working with them to get AT&amp;T in there to go.
That's an AT&amp;T issue.
AT&amp;T. I know, I know. It's, it's just.
Yeah, it'll happen, but slow.
Yeah.
We have the water tender at Lund, the engine control module went out. It's back in service. The Wildman truck from McGill, the pump went out on it. I've got it over at Eureka Road Department, and that should be coming back online soon. The Lund ambulance, the turbo on it went out. I just put it back in service yesterday. All the station doors, the work we've been doing from when their office on, that's all been completed. Ruth, Ruth's station, their opener, one door went out, so we're going to replace all three, because they're residential openers, and so we're going to upgrade it to commercial. Airport station doors, and we're just waiting for Carl to install it. I talked to him yesterday. He's going to get that, hopefully before snow flies.
Yeah, okay.
Went to the Cherry Creek Station, Bill Calderwood and I, waiting on R&amp;R to give us a bid to replace their roof on the station, where it's leaking. Baker's, the washer and dryer, and all the plumbing and electrical's been put in for it, and the washer and dryer's in place. The Lund Station bathroom remodel, county maintenance is doing that. And I've got the washer and dryer bot, we're just waiting for him to get the plumbing and electrical done down there for it. Ellen Curtis is here right now doing the SCBA testing that we have to have done every Lance Gill and I are going to start doing monthly checks on the airport trucks, so that's, we can make sure that's ready to go if needed. Working on the ARF training. We've got to find out who's got the money for that. All the calls, we've been getting real good response with entities working together, and everybody's starting to just, when we're on scene, just be one, kind of one department to get everything done. Me and Pat's been working on doing some training for the outlying areas, kind of working together with city trainers, county trainers, get that all, program kind of set up on that. All the station doors, I went around and recoded the combinations on them, so they're all the same now. The T-shirts that we made to pass the resolution on, the policy on, I've got them, sizes gathered, order of probably Friday. And we went with local, the Screamin' Ink, Jared Gringle, because he's right here in Ely. And we met with the guy from NDF on that Wildland Fire Protection Plan. It was kind of my introduction to it. I guess that was passed through the commission, according to him.
Yeah, it's like having the insurance.
Yeah, it's like an insurance thing. And myself and Court Hall's been working with the BLM Radiotech, getting all the radios that we got from BLM. They were all in pieces, so we're having to assemble them and reprogram them, but we'll get them. And then I did talk to Miller County Clerk on Friday, and we do have a mutual aid agreement with Miller County. It was last done in 2015. She's supposed to be sending me the copy of it, so just waiting on her to email that.
I thought that we did.
Yeah. So we can review it, see if we need to update or anything, so I think that's about it.
Excellent. Good job.
I appreciate you guys' hard work, and thank you for working together. Keep it up. Thank you so much.
Well, Mar and, everybody's been running really smooth. I didn't get you guys the copy of the report, and I've been out on vacation, so I just barely got back in, so I'm a little behind on getting some stuff done. But for the month of October, there were 122 calls, 45 in the county, 77 in the city. It's been working really good. We've had several calls in the city that we've had volunteers from Ruth show up and assist us lifting, helping on medical calls. Plenty of help when we go on outlying areas. We had the, you know, probably one of our better breastfires was in October, when you're usually not having enough at Cummins Lake. Had Ruth, McGill, ourselves, Revazair, BLM, and, you know, everybody worked good. So really been no issues. I think everything's running fairly smooth from standpoint, and if you guys got any questions, that's going to be it.
Regarding the ARF training, we'll figure out the money. You guys just let us know when you want to get it done, and we'll find.
Yeah, and that's something you guys can really look into. You know, the, when the airport dropped their 139s or Tefkets, you know, the required ARF kind of went away, so it's kind of up to what you guys want to do, whether you want to have it or not have it, you know? See what, see what your legal requirements are according to what your license is out there, because you could be going into a big expense for something that, you know, a lot of people have already been to this training. It's, it's, it's not like there's a lot of new stuff that comes up every time. It's, you know, you have an airplane crash, you basically have a structure fire with flammable liquids involved, so.
Yeah, I think, I think where some of the concern is big is sometimes those that fly in, and where we were restricted, is that their, their requirements is that there's an ARF.
Yeah, and we've had some. Well, we had, what was it, the British military was here this summer that had all them big helicopters and stuff that flew in. And well, you know, in advance like that, we can go out and staff that equipment, and we can do the same thing if there's some dignitaries that's planning to fly in, we know ahead of time. We could set up a schedule, and we can have people out there and, and, you know, get everything staffed and have equipment on standby where they land and take off, so.
As long as we've got people that know how to use it.
I mean, there's, there's parameters you can work with, it's just, you know, it's just how far you want, how far you want to go with it, you know?
The ARF training too, if you, it's yearly, so it's not like a one-time cost to get people done. It comes up every year.
It's expensive. It's really expensive.
We got to go to Dallas or something, right?
Right now, we got to go to Dallas.
Salt Lake used to have an air training facility, and they've closed their facility. Finally, Naval Base used to have one, but I don't believe they do theirs to the general public anymore. It's, it's theirs.
Matt's at Alco's working on building one.
They are, but it won't be ready till next year, so I think.
As long as we got people and more than one that knows how to use it, I'm comfortable. That's all I really care about, so.
I do think we need to identify the need as far as what, what our usage is out there, and if we are losing usage of our airport because we don't have it, and just see, see how that balances out cost-wise.
Cool. You guys are doing good, though. Thank you so much.
Excellent. It's nice to see these two chiefs together, if it's possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Okay, that was item one. Item two is discussion for possible action, the approval of monthly financial reports that drop October 2019. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They are in practice, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I have no issues at this point with their budget.
Anyone? I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion. For the second.
Motion by Ian and a second by Lori. Further discussion, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item three, is discussion update, a report from the committee assigned at the August 14, 2019 Fire Commission meeting, to streamline and coordinate efforts in getting the outlying volunteer fire requirements needs addressed in the most expedient manner possible. Lori Carson, Brett North, Mike Uwe, Phil Calderwood, Bill with Francis.
Okay, so the report I handed out this morning, it's, the latest update has been purple. We'd like to do color for me, so you know where we are.
Thank you.
And, and I think that Brett has already covered the highlights of all the work that's been done in his update to you, and for me to go back and repeat all that would just take your time, not necessarily, unless you have specific questions.
It looks like the only outstanding thing is the big-ticket items, which we'll fund this next fiscal year, and otherwise, it's pretty, pretty well on, way or completed.
Yeah, we've come a long ways.
Thank you. That's really small. That's just last.
If we don't.
All right. That was just a discussion item, no action needed. We are going to go on to item four, discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund, or adjust or approve grant slash agency funds. Elizabeth?
Thank you, and there was just one minor adjustment to accurately reflect the cost of software maintenance between the fire district and EMS, between fire and EMS programs.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item five, discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the following Fire Commission meeting, September 11, 2019, and October 9, 2019. Are there any additions, corrections, or subtractions? Anyone?
Move to approve.
Okay, a motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
Thank you.
Passion unanimous. Okay, the last item in the Fire Commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on what we've discussed here this morning in the fire district? Anyone? Last call. Hearing none and seeing none, we'll move forward. We'll close the Fire Commission meeting and reopen the White Pine County Commission meeting, and it's right before 9:30, so let's see if we can find something real quick here to add.
Want to do 4B, the liaison?
Okay, yeah. Okay, that's good. Okay, let's go to, is that an untimed item?
Yeah.
Okay, on page eight, item D, untimed items, discussion for possible action, the approval to select the county commissioner to serve as a liaison to the industrial park review board. Susan Luhon for Nicole Baldwin.
Okay, Nicole, just put this on, because it was put on there from the notes at the last, at the last meeting, and she didn't know if anything was done with it, so she just put it on in case it'd be discussed.
Is there even an industrial park review board this week?
Well, I think that's what we discussed at the last meeting. I would want to reopen that. And is that right? And then we just, is that just kind of a memo?
I thought we were going to appoint a commissioner to certain either liaison, but as the point of contact regarding the industrial park.
Yes, I think that's better.
I think that is what we wanted.
Because you have any wanted to go to the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I wrote, because there was stuff involving the land ownership out there that kind of made that actual original board sort of null and void at this point, so.
Can we act on this as?
No.
Okay, so we'll have to, what are we going to do with it?
You can table it.
Table. Okay, a motion by Shane, second by Ian. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Let's just roll right down with this on page eight, item C, discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes in the regular county commission meeting held October 23, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lori and a second by Ian. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Item D.
We can't do that one.
We can't do that one? Yeah, we can't do, we'll do lead D later.
Want to do consent agenda?
Yeah, let's do the consent agenda, that's your control. Anything further discussion? Anything for the consent agenda?
Moving to approve.
Motion by Shane to approve, second, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, aye.